Here. We're gonna click the buttons there, we're all set, have a good meeting.
Good evening, everyone, we're calling to order the meeting of the Citrus zoning board of the field since Thursday, December twenty first, two thousand and twenty three. The zoning board appeals is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings, we ask all members to interact in a polite manner, even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minority communities, to get welcome and respected. We ask our community members and all participants to admit to these standards of support and respect of our community, our community. Please note, Citrus zoning board appeals meeting in person and via Zoom call when the meeting is being recorded and can be reviewed on Citrus Community Television, Facebook Live. The recorded meeting will be available the following day on Comcast Channel nine and YouTube. All right, with that, we are moving the first application of Catherine's plan to the end. So we will be hearing the second application of Alexis Bishop, forty four Gannett Road, Cituit, requesting special permit finding in accordance with NGL chapter forty eight, section six. And section eight, ten, point one of the Citrus zoning bylaws to allow the raise of reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming garage at forty four Gannett Road. Do we have anybody here from the applicant? Please come on forward. And this is for everybody, your name and aggregate for the record.
Hi, I am Alexis Bishop, three four, the aggregate.
All right, folks, so walk us through what you're trying to do.
Well, so what we're proposing is to tear down an existing non-conforming garage. It's in pretty rough shape, fairly unusable and rebuild and maintain that footprint. And then with a more aesthetic and pleasing structure, two-story structural, one single car garage.
Apologies, you get the certain thing. Okay, so this is exactly on the same footprint, right? And square, total square footage, are you not going up any more than you've existed?
It's going up a couple, a few more feet.
But you're not creating sort of a second story on it?
It just says. Well, it's the two, yeah, there is an existing second story.
I'm sorry, I meant a third story, a certain third story, it's the existing basic structure, it's a little bit higher.
Yeah, it really does a pitch of a roof that's changing. Square footage, where it's just a little under eighteen feet wide, like point six feet long.
So. About it. Okay. Uh, Bob, anything on this?
No, it's similar to the situation that before dealt with a few years ago. With the garage studio that wanted to be rebuilt and in that case actually enlarged. I don't see any problem with branding this so long as the board needs it top or decorative or whatever that word is.
Substantially more different method. Yeah, I mean, and again, to your point, it is that to the applicant's point, it's an existing garage. It's going to be on the same footprint and will be more or less the same height, two-story garage.
The only thing I would say is that, and this is going to modify your thinking, I don't think, is that a two-story story garage will reach out around fifteen feet. Which, there's no way to tell from these documents whether that's the case here or back there. Needs to meet a greater setback to the rear yard than a garage fifteen feet or lower. However, this building appears to meet that setback, twenty feet to the rear yard, so doesn't really change anything.
Anything from the board on this? Public in the room? No, public online. Okay, pretty straightforward.
A question on the application. Would you need square footage if you have, you're proposing a total of eight hundred and sixty-four?
The footprint itself is both four and sixty-eight square feet.
Right.
The second floor itself, the second floor would probably be probably about seventy-five percent of that, so, yeah, it's probably eight hundred square foot, total square footage for the two floors, building garage.
Exactly. I don't like. I mean, by your application, about eight hundred and sixty-four.
What's that?
The application of eight hundred and sixty-four existing.
Okay.
That was just an estimate, because we had, we still haven't finalized the plans.
Yeah, but we limited to the exact same footprint.
Right, and the question is, what are the flaws changing this in theory, right? Campaigns, second.
I understand, I understand the question.
Do you have more detailed drawings here in front of you currently, or?
No, just, I mean, you probably just told us the grid, I have the four plans and the elevations and the site plan.
We don't have an actual. Yeah, so.
I can bring it up to you.
Yeah, it's been a month.
I have all of them by the center here, I can actually get to you. She has.
Sir Tony Blair.
This is the first one. Can you send that over?
So.
All right, so it should be with the application. So the footprint stays, just increasing that head height.
Well, he used to have a ridge height of twenty-one feet.
Shouldn't make it, shouldn't make it twenty-two because, you know, it does need to be really that setback.
Right, it's still four, right. It was still like twenty.
It would only need an eight-foot setback to have a ridge height of less than two.
So can we see? That, this is it, so this is going to be part of this. So, all this, when we're done, this is going to go with the application.
Wonderful, thank you.
For the pile. And Matt will, so thank you for that. So with that, I will make a motion that the board approve. The raise and reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming garage at forty four Gannett Road, Citrus Mass, pursuant to the plans dated seven twenty-one, twenty-three. And that the board find that the proposed raise and reconstruction does not reduce any non-conformities to the extent it intensifies any existing non-conformities. Such intensification is not substantially more than. Say that, all in favor?
Aye.
So, you can.
Oh, sorry, thank you very much.
All right. So next, we'll hear the third application of Robert Keough, Twenty Newell Street, Citrus Mass. Requesting a special permit finding in accordance with NGL chapter forty eight, section six, one, and four seventy-six. Of the different bylaw and or any other relief or repeal contract, allow the reconstruction of a previous non-conforming single-family home on that corner. And the aggregate for the record.
Very happy, Jeff Assett, I'm a civil engineer with the Civil Engineering. I'm here on behalf of the property owner, Robert Keough, property's Twenty Eagle Street in Humrock. And we're here seeking a special permit and finding under section C ten and four seventy-six to raise and reconstruct a single-family home. This property is in the R three zoning district, the existing single-family home was built in nineteen fifty-one. And it's about twelve hundred square feet in size, and it's currently non-FEMA compliant. The property is non-conforming with respect to frontage and width, where one hundred feet is required and the actual is seventy-five. And it's also not conforming with respect to the front yard setback. Thirty feet is required and currently the front yard setback is twenty-four, six. So this proposal is to rebuild the single-family home, which will be fully FEMA compliant, will be elevated on piles. And it shifts the house back from the road a couple feet to, to make that front yard setback comply. Therefore, the new house does comply with all the setbacks on the sides. And thus, it does not create any, create any new non-conformities, actually eliminates non-conformities. The new home is larger, it's about, it will be a total of twenty-three hundred square feet, choosing an eighty-seven percent increase.
Thank you.
Really no comments at all along the current leaders in the conservation mission? That should be very straightforward.
Board, that's fine. Anybody from the community in the room? No, anybody from the community on Zoom? No. Okay, on this one. So, on the application of Robert Keough, Twenty Newell Street, Citrus Mass, requesting a special permit in accordance with NGL forty-eight, section six, section eight, ten, one, four seventy-six of the Citrus bylaws. Allow the raise and reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming single family dwelling on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. At Twenty Newell Street, Citrus Mass, we moved it, we approved, settled, raised and reconstruction pursuant to the plans of Morse Engineering dated eleven sixteen, two thousand and twenty-three. And that the board find, there it said, the raise and reconstruction does not reduce any new non-conformities to the extent it intensifies any existing non-conformities, such an intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. In fact, it reduces some non-conformities. Second, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very. Good job getting off the street. All right, with that, we will move to our, technically our fourth application, Jason Stefani, Two Ocean Avenue, Citrus Pass. Requesting special permit finding in accordance with NGL forty-eight, section six, and section eight, ten, point one, and four seventy-six of the Citrus zoning bylaw and or any other relief or grant to allow the construction of an addition to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at Two Ocean Avenue.
This property is at Two Ocean Avenue, the applicant, the owner is Jason Stefani, and we're here seeking again a special permit and finding under eight, ten, and four seventy-six, this time for an addition to a single-family home on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. So again, in the R three zoning district, it's developed with a single-family home built in nineteen ten, that's about thirty-one hundred square feet. The current, the frontage is about seventy-four square feet, I mean seventy-four feet, where a hundred feet is required, so it's not conforming with respect to frontage and width. And also, the front yard setback is slightly not conforming by about an inch. So the proposed work is an addition on the rear of the house. It's a two-story addition with a two-car garage. And that addition does comply with all, with the required setbacks. And there's a detached garage in that area that will be demolished. That detached garage is non-conforming as well, so that non-conformity will be eliminated. So this project also does not create any new non-conformities. And it's about forty-six percent decrease, bringing the total gross floor area to about forty-five hundred square feet.
Uh, no, this is one that will depend on the detail of the application and specifically the cost proposed to the new construction relative to the sound like and value of the existing structure. It could go either way, if the fifty percent threshold isn't triggered, the addition does not have to meet FEMA elevation requirements. If it is, then the addition would, as I understand it, have to meet FEMA elevation requirements for an A-zone.
And I assume you folks agree that that's the case.
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
Again, that will be in the details when that, once that happens. Comments from the community in the room? Comments from the community online? Oh, I'm sorry, I missed you, yes, sir, please, name, name and address for the record.
Thomas Higgins, McTwelve Collar Garage. I am a supporter to the property, beautiful man. The, the neighborhood is somewhat dense. There's very little privacy. So, our concern, we'd like the board to consider just how this will impact everyone else's privacy. Shading, exterior lighting, windows within our property next door. So, because we have not seen a plan of how high the addition's going to be, the balance going to be.
Comments?
Yeah, so the addition goes off of the rear of the house, it's a two-story addition, which is about twenty-three by, by twenty, twenty-three by twenty-four. And then a twenty-four by twenty-four garage that, beyond that living area above. It does conform to the setback to that property line, the required setback is eight feet and it's going to range from nine to twelve point one. In that area, there's a one-story garage that's only a foot and a half off the property line, another need removed. So this, you know, this addition will be setback to conform with the required setbacks in that, especially in that area.
Is, is the building, the addition is, will the addition be any higher than the existing dwelling, I don't have an equation.
No.
It won't be higher than the existing garage?
It won't be higher than the existing house.
Which is quite a bit higher than the garage.
It's a house. All right. Any other questions or comments from the community? Online? All right, well, with respect to the applicant, I think the applicant has heard some of the com, some commentary from the others. You may want to consider fencing, shading, screening, et cetera. And that, I think, is probably best discussed with the others. Anything else from the board? So, on the application of racing, on Two Ocean Avenue, requesting special permit finding in accordance with NGL forty-eight, section six, and section eight, ten, point one, and four seventy-six. This is on bylaw and or any other relief or grant, allow the construction of an addition to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at Two Ocean Avenue. Remove that proposed construction of the addition. Be approved pursuant to the plan by Morse Engineering dated eleven fifteen, twenty-three, and the board find the proposed addition is not, is not reducing any new non-conformities to the extent it intensifies any existing non-conformities, so that that's. All right, second, second, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Number four. You're going to five, didn't?
I know.
Great, do you want to comment?
No.
On our second.
Trying to best to keep these organized.
Yeah, that's, I'm going to go.
You did a great job, this is me, my job. All right, so that was Ocean Avenue. All right, on our technically fifth application, the fourth one we're hearing tonight, Doreen and Brian Carey, the Garfield, request a special permit finding in accordance with NGL chapter forty-eight, section six, and section eight, ten, point two, and four seventy-six of the Citrus zoning bylaw and or any other relief or grant to allow the construction of an addition to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at the Garfield Street. One no time for better.
Jeff Assett, Morse Engineering. So the property owners of eight Garfield Street in Humrock, Doreen and Brian Carey, are seeking to put an addition on their single-family home. It requires a special permit under section eight, ten, point two, and four seventy, point six. This property is Zoned R three, developed with a single-family home built in nineteen sixty, which is about nine hundred and eighty-two square feet. It's not conforming with respect to lot area, it's only about forty-eight hundred square feet, as well as frontage, there's sixty feet of frontage, sixty feet of width, which is not conforming. It's not conforming with respect to the side yard setback on the left only, and also the rear yard setback. The required rear yard setback is twenty, it's only five point two. The proposed addition is on the side of the house that does conform to the property line setback, the addition is nineteen point five feet by twenty-one feet, it's a same-story addition. So it don't, it only increases the living area to about fourteen hundred square feet, it's only two percent decrease. That setback does comply with side yard setback, it does not comply with rear yard setback, but it's more conforming than the existing house. And with respect to FEMA, this property is in a FEMA flood zone. The addition will be elevated on, on driven piles, and it will not be a substantial improvement, so the whole house will not have to be elevated in compliance.
Bob?
Uh, no, no, uh, beyond what Jeff has said, that it will be elevated all along. The FEMA flood zone is listed as A fourteen and the elevation proposed is ten point six. So it won't be FEMA flood zone requirements, it will match the floor level of the existing house. Again, but again, the house is pre-furn, the cost proposed, presumably of less than fifty percent of the cost of the existing house, so there are no requirements that elevation set by FEMA was achieved by the, by the new addition, or the, or the existing.
Uh, board, everything usual. Now. Folks in the room? No, folks online? No? Uh, anybody want to make a motion on this?
This application, Doreen and Brian Carey, the property owner, Cituit, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with NGL chapter forty-eight, section six, and section eight, ten, point two, and four seventy, point six. The bylaw for a, the board grant and allow construction of an addition to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at the Garfield Street. And that the board find that such, pursuant to plan of Morse Engineering dated whatever eight, one, two, three. The board find that such addition does not create any new non-conformities to the extent that it intensifies any existing non-conformities. Such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
All right, on the sixth application, and that, on the sixth application of near glory of E. Boyer Realty Plus, one seventeen Lyman Roaches in the mass, requesting special permit finding in accordance with NGL chapter forty-eight, section six, sections four seventy, point six F, eight, ten, point one, on view of the Citrus zoning bylaw. And or any other relief or grant to allow the reconstruction of a single-family dwelling at Seventy Calaway Road, which home was destroyed by fire with the construction of a single-family home at some of these four C glade roads, glade roads, which home was potentially damaged by fire. Allow continued non-conformity of the property, which is owned by, by two single-family dwellings, seventy-four, seventy-four C glade road. All right, Jeff, one more time.
All right, so the owner of this property is near glory, and this property has two homes on it, seventy-four and seventy-four C glade road. And we're seeking a special permit under eight, ten, and four seventy, point six, to rebuild the single-family homes that were destroyed by a fire. So to give you a background of this permitting, we were in front of you back in May, and permits were issued for this, for this project. Since then, you know, that was the first step in the permitting process, we've now met with board health and conservation who have approved it. Through that, the permitting, and as well as some minor tweaks architecturally and from meeting with the neighbors, there are some minor changes that were made to the site plan. So we're coming back in front of you this evening for those changes. On the application, on the table, we list all of the setbacks as we typically do, and then in red listed what previously. And setbacks are very similar, in this case, it goes about three feet closer to the water in the rear. Otherwise, the setbacks would have been what, what previously approved, what was previously approved. So in this case, although it's slightly different, the setbacks are all either conforming or they are no closer to the property lines than the homes, the home that was destroyed by the fire. So we're not creating any new non-conformities.
Bob? All right.
Jeff, I'm not seeing the two setbacks in red that you spoke about.
On the application. Yeah.
Yeah, maybe.
Okay, then the ones on the handbrake on the side. Those of the previous.
Oh, it's provided with black mark.
We don't have any.
Oh, so that, that's why. Well, I can go through them.
Yeah, can you just?
So, yeah, the front setback required is thirty, existing was forty-eight point three.
Yep.
We were proposing the same setback originally, and that did not change.
Right.
The left side required is eight, existing was five. What was approved before was six point two, we're proposing five point one, so it's more conforming than the previous home.
Right, it's still more, it's still more conforming, but it's less than its original.
Yes, okay. On the right-hand side, required is eight, previously it increased over the property line. Proposed, what, six feet, and now we're proposing five point four. And the rear twenty is required, forty-six point seven was, was, forty-six point seven is existing, or prior being burned.
Yep.
Previously approved was thirty point two. Now we're proposing thirty-three point six, so it's more conforming.
Okay. Square, the square footage, same?
Square footage went up, the footprint is very similar, but the third floor is now going to be finished area, which increases the finished area to about fifty-one hundred square feet, which is a hundred and thirty-two percent increase.
Right, what was it before?
Forty-two hundred.
Can you do the same, give the second strike here?
Yep. Okay, seventy-four C. Front setback, thirty required, existing six point five. Previously approved, three point two. Now proposed, four point eight. On the left-hand side, eight feet is required, existing is two point one. Previously approved is three point one, same. Right-hand side, eight feet required, six point one existing, previously approved, three point four, same posting. Rear setback required twenty, existing one hundred and five point six, proposed one hundred and two point nine, I'm sorry, previously approved one hundred and six, now proposed one hundred and two point nine. Living area, previously approved was one thousand two hundred and ninety, now proposed is one thousand one hundred and thirty-four.
And this all came out through the process, right, between conservating, right, making changes based on their input.
Yeah, the first step is always coming before. Yeah, the first step is always coming before the zoning board. And that, you know, we permitted now, we have permits for conservation, board health. So there were some tweaks requested by those two departments, as well as just from the homeowners.
Board. Folks in the room? Folks online? One more time to the board.
George, could I?
Yes.
I have a question, where do we stand with the writing of a decision, a decision having. Run through its appeal period, the decision having been filed at the registry, that sort of thing. I'm asking that so that we might know how to supersede and modify that decision, but the decision we're about to make.
So. Elizabeth, what, so this is a decision that obviously has been written already, right? Has it, what date was it posted?
I would not know off the top of my head, I can certainly round it up, be able to find it, if I can.
No, I can tell you it has not been recorded.
Right, it has not been.
So that's a good thing. No, that's fine, as long as it's in this.
It's in house. So, so, don't record it. Alright, Elizabeth, don't record it, and this will supersede that previous decision.
Application of near Dory, Beachport Realty Trust. Line Road, just a little. Requesting special permit finding and according to MGL chapter forty eight, section six, sections four seventy F, eight ten point one. Two of the bylaw. Per plan of more than engineering revised eleven fifteen twenty twenty-three. Or grant to allow the reconstruction of a single family home at seventy-four glade road. For the fire reconstruction of a single family home at four C glade road. By fire, allowed to continue not from use of property, which is. Home dwellings at seventy, seventy-four and seventy-four C glade road. Board find that such reconstruction does not create any new non-conformities. Intensified any existing non-conformities, such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the.
A second, on favor? Now to the, what is on the list, application.
So on seventh application of near Dory, Beachport Realty Trust, one seventeen Lyman Road, just a little mass, requesting special permit finding. In accordance with MGL forty A, section six, and sections four seventy, point six F, eight and point two of the secret zone by law. And or any other legal grant, which home, to grant permit for the reconstruction of a single family home, which home was destroyed by fires and four B glade road. Alright, so this property, this project is very similar, located immediately next door. Home by the state now. And again, this was previously approved, submitting a revised plan with some minor modifications to that. I'll run through the zoning table that, that I have to kind of compare. Openly, it doesn't create any new non-conformities. But the lot is not conforming with respect to the lot area, the lot rented, the lot debt. And the proposed home is not conforming with this, the existing home is not conforming with respect to the plan year setback. The required front yard setback is thirty feet. The existing is point five. Previously approved is three point five, and this modification is three point seven. So two inches further rolling. The required side yard setback on the left is eight, existing is forty-five point one. Previously approved is twenty-seven point three, now proposed thirty-one point three. Side setback on the right required eight, existing one point five. Previously approved nine point five, now proposed four point five. And rear setback, twenty is required, existing is two. And three point two was previously approved and is the same now. The proposed gross floor area was twenty three, two thousand three hundred and fifty, is now three thousand ninety-nine. Similarly, it's the upper floor that's not made to finish, resulting in the additional floor.
Yeah, you've moved it. Board, initial questions? Folks? Folks in the room? Folks online?
The seventh application near Dory, Beachport Realty Trust, seven seventeen Lyman Road, just a little mass. Requesting a special permit finding in accordance with MGL chapter forty eight, section six, sections four seventy F, eight ten point two. Of the bylaw, according to the plan of more than engineering revised on eleven fifteen twenty-three. That the board permit the reconstruction of a single family home, which was destroyed by fires, seventy-four B glade road. The board find that such reconstruction does not create any new non-conformities in the extent that it testifies any existing non-conformities. Such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the.
Second, on favor? That's granted. Alright. One more?
One, one more, but it's one time. On the eighth. Per the original notice, application of the Ponkin Family Living Trust, sixty long metal road Milton. Requesting special permit finding in accordance with MGL forty-eight, section six, and section four seventy, point six F, eight ten point two of the secret zone by law. To allow the raise and rebuild or reconstruction of a single family dwelling, seventy glade road. This property seventy glade is owned by the Ponkin Family Trust. This is the same scenario as before, but this project was previously approved, and now we're coming in with some minor modifications footprint. Again, it does not create any new non-conformities. And running through the zoning chart, the required front yard setback is thirty. The existing home was at forty-five. Previously approved was forty-two, current proposed is thirty-seven point nine. The left, left setback, it required is eight feet, and previously approached. Previous application had a setback of six feet, and now we're proposing five point one. The right side setback requires eight feet, existing was five point seven. Previously approved was six feet, and that's not changing. The rear yard setback is required to be twenty. Previous home was ninety-nine feet, the previous application was at ninety-six, and this application is one hundred point nine. And the gross floor area increased from eight thousand one hundred and sixty to three thousand seven hundred and three square feet. Again, that, the additional living area is on the.
What about building?
Building height still conforms, thirty nine, you're allowed up to forty feet to the bridge, so that's thirty-nine point seven to the bridge.
Any change to it?
Before, we called it about thirty-five feet. That's measured to the form of the roof.
I don't know, so very hard to be seen in that way.
Yeah, I don't know. Ten foot for the bridge, be higher, bridge longer.
No, no comments.
People in the room? People on Zoom?
I mean, the application of Ponkin Family Living Trust, sixty long metal road, building mass. Requesting special permit finding, and of course, MGL chapter forty eight, section six, and section four seventy F, eight ten point two of the bylaw. And that the allow the raising, rebuild in accordance with plan of more than engineering revised eleven seventeen twenty-three. For a single family dwelling at seventy glade roads. The board find that such raising, rebuild does not create any new non-conformities in the extent that it testifies any existing non-conformities. Such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the.
A second. On favor? How many lights on all of this? Oh, yeah, there you go, okay, great. And none, we're just confirming that none of these that are modifications haven't reported yet, is that correct?
I'm a hundred percent sure about the first, where you discussed the last one, seventy. I don't know, okay, I just can't imagine it's been recorded already, because it's by the conservation permits.
Right.
But I don't know, okay, so check with the procedurality, right, we'll have to figure out what we have to do. Just check, correct, check the office, you know, maybe just figure it out, let's, let that bill out tomorrow.
If I recall, I think seventy is already applied for a permanent. I'm not a hundred percent sure what I think that's.
Might have been. Okay, right, I mean. In that situation, well, it's recorded, we can't unrecord it, so there are two, two permits on it.
Correct, it's basically, yeah. Right, yeah, permit, yeah.
Oh, whole, right, whole permit, yeah, refiled, okay, for the new permit. I guess, right.
Yeah, that would probably be an easier way to do it, I'm just thinking that the board's decision on the one that's been filed. Should specifically mention and refer to in some detail the previous. Decision that had been filed, and say this.
Right.
Modifieds and superseds.
Or they can, or they can pull the permit and get a new one, and it doesn't matter.
I know, I'm thinking of the board's decision having been filed over the legislature.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yes, okay.
So just write it, supersede.
Right, correct, the previous, previous modifications on the.
Specifically return to the modifications on the date the decision was.
They've often tried with the town clerk, but if they can record it with the registry deeds. We can check them.
Alright. We'll figure it out. Alright, now we're going to go back to our first application. For our two. Which would be the application of Patrick Spillane, three twenty-six Central Avenue, Massachusetts. Waiver, request of the permit and go finding, pursuant to secret zone by law, eight ten point one, over four, here, and then. Or now, period of pre-existing non-construtor, pre-existing non-construtor. At three twenty-six Central Avenue, Massachusetts. At the end of the key part, the fire, point two, a finding pursuant to the secret zone by law, eight twenty-one point two C, MGL forty A, section six. You allow, of course, repair, alteration, construction, extension of the tank, instead of non-construtor, it will not be subject to what, the name of the unit is not. Okay. Name and address for the record.
Attorney Jeff Delisi, Armburger Delisi in Harris, I represent the applicant. And I'm there with Jeff Acet, North Engineering, you guys know Jeff?
First time.
I figure you guys are pushovers, so I mean, I can just skip the whole.
That's right. So how about we walk us through this?
Okay.
And convince us that eight ten point one.
Let me know when you're ready. Go for it, okay, great, we're good. So, this Spillane's owned the property at three twenty-six Central Avenue. For about three quarters of a century, a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling existed on the property. The dwelling itself, and Jeff's going to get into this, was slightly. Non-conforming on the northerly side yard in this one little area right here. Otherwise, the dwelling is fully conforming to dimensional yard setbacks. Specifically, that little area that jogs into the setback, the closest point of it to the property line is five point two feet. And the zoning district requires eight feet. So unfortunately, in two thousand twelve, after about three quarters of a century, the dwelling burned. And. For a period of time after the dwelling burned, a foundation remained on the property. Sometime around two thousand fifteen. Much of the foundation was removed for safety purposes. And after, after that work occurred, there remained a large hole. On the property in the area of the foundation, about seven feet. Deep in the ground, which also contained remnants of a foundation wall. That particular hole, the foundation hole was never filled. Presumably because it was intended that the home would be rebuilt. It's also noteworthy, I'd like the board to take note of the fact that. After the fire, the land itself continued to be assessed as a bill of the lot at all times. Up in two, including the present date, where it is currently assessed. At four hundred and five thousand one hundred dollars, and it's taxes are paid on that amount. So the lot stayed in that condition with the hole on it, the foundation remnants. Till about six months ago. When the Spillane were advised by their insurance company. That they were having difficulty getting insurance because it was an attractive nuisance. And so, the decision was made about six months ago, about after two thousand twenty-two. That they would backfill over that particular foundation hole. And grade it, and they used, I think J L S to do that, it was building a house on the opposite side of the street. It's also noteworthy that there presently exists a detached accessory building on the property, which did not burn and continues to be used. So the key to this application is section eight ten point one of your zoning bylaw. And section eight ten point one. Basically. It, it's the grandfather in section of the bylaw, and what it does is it establishes grandfather rights. And then it also talks about the abandonment of. Non-conforming uses and structures. And so what it says specifically is that. A use or a structure can be continued as a right. Even though it's not in conformity with the provisions of the zoning bylaw. And less than until. It is abandoned or not used for four years or more. And then it goes on to say, except that the ZBA has the authority to waive that timeframe by a special permit of finding. And that language, the waiver language, is new to the bylaw since the year two thousand twenty-two. The section eight ten point one existed significantly in the exact same language. Especially the first or second line where it uses the words effective. Date of the bylaw or any amendments thereto, that existed prior to two thousand twenty-two. And continues now, the difference is that. The abandonment or non-use period formerly read two years, and now reads four. And also the provision that allows the ZBA the authority to waive that timeframe is inserted. Doesn't give you any standards, basically, it's as you see fit. In this particular case, the residential use of this property had long been, long since been established. The dwelling use of the property is not non-conforming. Because the residential use, if you look at your table of uses, is allowed as a right in the zoning districts. because a residential use, if you look at your table of uses, is allowed as a right in the zoning districts. Uh, thus, we believe we did not lose the right to have a dwelling on this lot because it's a conforming use and the abandonment and nonuse provision only applies to nonconforming uses. Because you lose the right if you have a structure or use that is nonconforming, if you stop using it for a period of four years or more. So, we believe we have the absolute right to have a dwelling on this property because it's a conforming use. And as you'll, um, as I indicated, the only aspect of the dwelling itself that is dimensionally nonconforming to yard setbacks is the northerly side yard. And you'll see that the proposal is to eliminate that nonconformity altogether. So we don't seek to continue with the nonconforming use. We seek to eliminate it altogether. So, um. So in consultation with Neil and Bob, um, I was told, though I, I was actually unaware of the change in the bylaw language that occurred in two thousand twenty two, which gave you guys the authority to make the call to extend the timeframe. Um. I don't think that we even need to do that because we have a conforming use, that has long since been established, and we can't abandon it or not, nonuse it. And uh, we have a nonconforming building which we don't seek to continue. We seek to continue a conforming building. So, but nonetheless, um, uh, I was uh, advised that it would be best to apply to the ZBA to request a waiver because the intention of the bylaw really is to give you guys the authority to say, you, you know, you, you could rebuild after a period of time has expired. And the whole reason, I believe, why that language was inserted in the bylaw was because the former language was very rigid. And what ended up happening is people did not rebuild after a damaged or destroyed home within the records of a period of time because they had no knowledge that there was a timeframe. Maybe because the town continues to assess them as buildable. Um, or because they have an accessory building and continue to use it on the property, or because they have a hall on the property with the foundation remnants. But people were losing that right. And I think that um, the building department was getting a lot of slack from people because basically um, a rigid reading would, would equate to essentially a unconstitutional taking without just compensation. So, the language was inserted, and you now have this right. Uh, and this Blains have lived here in Amarok for, you know, twenty, thirty years or so. So, um, that's pretty much uh, what's going on, not a lot. Uh, but I would ask you to either uh, vote on a decision which says, we believe that you didn't lose your nonconforming use, and since you're not rebuilding in a, a nonconforming structure, um, it's not necessary for us to grant you the relief. Or to sign a decision that says, um, we waived the timeframe because you had remnants of a structure on your, all the way up until two thousand twenty three. And uh, uh, and we grant you the finding, we rebuild the house that conforms. And that's really what I'm asking, so.
So we were fully clear, the house, the house as opposed would be fully conforming as the setbacks, the only nonconforming use would be the lot. Correct?
The lot does not conform.
Correct, but in, in, in that, in, in the, in this scenario where this gets built, the house conforms to setbacks, the lot is the lot.
But the lot has more than five thousand square feet, more than fifty feet of frontage, and was laid out on our plan in like the nineteen twenties.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I.
But, but that would allow it to be a single lot exemption. So.
So I, I understand.
Yeah.
Uh, but. So, so that's your sort of not, not conforming argument, right? Because your argument is the use, the permitted use of, sorry, uh, this is the art.
The residence zone.
Yeah, it's an R G zone, it was used as residence, and it will be used as a residence. And so your argument, again, I'm just trying to clarify your argument. Is that it was always used as a residence, we're trying to build, rebuild your residence there, and that residence will need all appropriate setbacks. The only thing that is not met is the current, so I mean, uh, that lots for the lot.
Right, the caveat on all of that being, we still have accessory building on the property that's continued to be used, which I think we can get some credit for, um, and for the tax situation.
Your, your editor.
Yep.
Do the taxes, right? But, and your second argument, your second ar- sort of embedded in that is that uh, because you're continuing to use the accessory structure that's on the lot, the lot has not been abandoned.
You can't, yeah, you can't, I don't think you can abandon the lot, but that is one, one factor. Yes, that is one factor that would contribute to the argument that there was never an intention to abandon the use of the lot for, for these purposes.
Yes, when I say the lot was banned, the use of it was banned.
And I, and I think that that's. Yeah, and I think that that's a distinction potentially with other, other lots in the area as well, that might not be able to um have, they might not have a building like that, or or have enough space for a conforming dwelling or whatever.
So, again, let's delve into the history a little bit. Burnt down in twenty
Twelve.
Twenty twelve. Uh. For the last six months of the foundation that may or may not have been there, I'm just saying, whether, that's a different question. Uh, that last six months, I don't think is particularly relevant. The attractive use of that, the rest of the attractive use of this, if that's the case. I don't think, I don't think we're gonna, I don't think that, that cuts against it, is what I'm saying, right? So, so, I think a couple of things. What happened, why? Why, why hasn't it been, been rebuilt?
I think it's kind of a personal issue, the uh, and I don't have personal knowledge of this exception, say that the owner of the property at the time. Um. See if I can give some different context. I, I believe that a firefighter was injured on the property when the fire was being extinguished. And um, that injury was taken personally by the owner of the property. The owner of the property ended up um in a facility as a, as a result, I believe, of that, that's what I'm told. And for many years, the property kind of, the management of the property was kind of in the limbo. And that, that's the chief reason why that initial, I think the former bylaw said, within three years of the fire, it opened the application. And um, I believe that was the reason, though I do not have personal knowledge, I just know that.
That's what you're saying.
From my own, so, yeah, yeah, okay.
Um, let me ask, and then I'll open it up, because again, I call my own. So let's say it's not this property, let's say it is a almost identical property uh, where the house burnt down forty years. And has not been rebuilt. Right? And maybe there's what's the remnants of the foundation, right, making.
Okay.
In that situation, what is your, what would you say about rebuilding?
Um, I think it's kind of.
Because I'm trying to titrate this, you understand, because there, there's, to your point, right? This was, eight ten point one was changed, and there was an intent to allow people to rebuild after disaster.
Yep.
Absolutely. And there is an ongoing, clear intent that that thinking cannot be perpetual, it cannot reach back into infinity, right?
I'm not sure about that. So, I, I.
Well, that's why I'm asking the question, I intend, what's.
Sure, um, so I think the elephant in the room is, in, in the language that you focus on in order to kind of make this argument and talk about this, is the beginning of the paragraph, so we're talking about hypothetical situation that does not involve this property, to be clear. Um, what we're, what the language of the bylaw said before two thousand twenty two. Uh, this is great. In fact, I'm gonna just hand, hand out something for you guys to look at, so it'd be easier for you to look along with me.
Oh, you got a parent trust.
Parent trust. Um. So, don't, 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 let me walk you through the argument before you lose yourself in the words. Um. The old bylaw, old section eight ten point one started with any lawful structure or any lawful use of land or structure existing at the effective date of this bylaw or any amendment thereto. And then goes on to say, though that, though not in conformity, may continue for two years, for up to two years. Okay? That language didn't change, so when the two thousand twenty two change came through, um, um, and it down in the last paragraph here, April of two thousand twenty two, um, that language in eight ten point one continued to be the same at the beginning. Any lawful structure, any lawful use of land or structure existing, this is the new part, existing in whole or in substantial part as of the effective date of this bylaw or any amendment thereto. So the language as of the effective date of this bylaw or any amendment, or any amendment thereto never changed. We all know, this board knows that the zoning bylaw was adopted like three quarters of a century ago, like some lengthy period of time ago, and has changed over a period of time by amendments, which were voted on at town meeting. Okay? So, when you read this provision, and it says any lawful structure or any lawful use of land or structure existing in whole or in substantial part as of the effective date of this bylaw or any amendment thereto, it means the zoning bylaw, it doesn't say as of the effective date of this section of the bylaw or any amendment thereto, it's the same language that was there previously. And so, the way to kind of circle back to your argument, or to your question, now bringing ourselves to your scenario where you're asking, well, what happens in the circumstance where a property was damaged or destroyed forty years ago and never rebuilt? Well, the answer is that, um, if there was a structure that existed in whole or substantial part as of the effective date of the bylaw, which was adopted in like the nineteen thirties or any amendment thereto, though in not in conformity, may, may continue for a period of four, up to four years, except that the ZBA may waive that requirement. So I read that language because it gives life to the whole zoning bylaw as applying to the entire zoning bylaw. My understanding is that Bob and Neil believe that the language means as of the effective date of the amendment in two thousand twenty two, but it doesn't say that. And it uses the same language that was there previously. So my argument would be that this paragraph, which is a totally separate scenario than what I have here, this should be approved because we had structures in whole or in substantial part or whatever, um, up to about six months ago, if you're gonna even say it applies, and it doesn't apply to use of a non, we have a conforming use and we're going to a conforming structure. That's different, and we have a building and we're assessed for, we have an accessory building, we're assessed for a lot which contains a house. But aside from that, this bylaw, if it, if the town, it was the town that voted on it, and if somebody got up at town meeting and, and the bylaw said as of the effective date of this section of the bylaw, I can think of one influential person who would have stood up and said, no, 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 that's not right. It should be, applies to all properties. And he would have spoken, but he didn't because that language wasn't there. So I think that this board has the authority to interpret it the way it should interpret the entire zoning bylaw. This bylaw should apply to this bylaw, which includes this section and any amendment thereto. So I think that it should have retroactive effect, and I think it's a good thing because, because otherwise you have a situation where property can waste away. Property that was once buildable, which is one of the goals articulated by the SJC in case law to preserve once buildable lots from being rendered nonbuildable. Here, in, in a circumstance that I can think of involving a house that was demolished during the blizzard of seventy eight, it would have, it, it would have, uh, um. I think that this should apply to that. So that, that would be my argument, but that's another day, another argument for another time.
Maybe.
Different.
Maybe, maybe. Um, all right, and then I'll turn to the board. Oh. But probably tee it up at like this, that's like, right? The, the setup. Really, the back and forth. Your thoughts on this?
So having been the principal author of the new language in this bylaw.
Yeah.
I can probably discuss two threads. One is the eloquent argument advanced by attorney DeLeese, the other is what I intended to say.
Okay.
And they may not be the same thing.
They, they may not be the same thing, and, and some of us may have an even third opinion, right? So, so, so let's, let's talk about all of these things, because there's a reason I left this the last.
Will we ever import that, like, me a different?
Correct.
At any rate, my thought in putting this new language in was to ameliorate and prevent situations where a devolent structure existed within a neighborhood, for example, and I can list several addresses, and this board has already actually ruled on one of them, thirty four hollow. Uh. Burned out twenty five years ago, sitting there, uh, a blight on the neighborhood, a danger. All of the things that are easily imagined about a situation. So the intent of this bylaw was to make structure like that rehabilitatable uh, and worth rehabilitating and no longer valueless. And incidentally, sort of moving away from the possibility that the town would be charged with taking property without proper compensation.
Sure.
So that was the initial intent. Um. I wanted to make the trigger point, if you will, of the bylaw and its provisions, the time of adoption of this amendment.
Yeah.
Uh, if it doesn't say that, uh, shame on me.
Correct.
Uh, I would have said something to that effect, very similar to the second. Uh, I would have said something to that effect, very similar to the second or perhaps third phrase of that first sentence where it says subject to limitations established in Massachusetts general laws, chapter forty A, section six, as amended. Now, to me, and I'm not a attorney, obviously, that means that the latest amendment is the, and language is what governs a case being considered in light of that language, and that was my intent here, that we're talking about a situation present day, that situation is governed by the language of this amended bylaw, not the language of the original bylaw. I don't see how frankly you can logically take another position. I mean, why would you not be governed by the latest amendment, the latest language, the latest thinking? And the latest will of the town in this case, the town area code, as expressed here. So that's one, one issue that's, that's, that's one standing on. Another one is the difference between lawful use of land or structure. Um, I fully agree that this is a residential zone, that the land is zone residential, and that the residential use is lawful. I don't necessarily disagree with you that this lot in non-conforming, for Friday's with area is a lawful lot, let's try and make, make that distinction. You could lawfully use it for residential purposes if it were owned by an adjacent or joined to or owned by a, a neighbor. You could extend your house onto that lot, residential purpose. You could build a, a garage or barn on that lot, residential purpose. Uh, you could even put an accessory dwelling on that lot, for residential purpose. It doesn't mean the lot is compliant, it doesn't mean the lot is lawful, but the purpose the lot is to be used for remains lawful, no question. So far as whether or not the structure or a substantial part of it existed as of whatever date the board and Attorney DeLeese decided, um, we're looking at, uh, you know, that's obviously key. And I purposely did not want to define that.
So case by case, by case.
Case by case analysis.
Case by case analysis, however, I never envisioned, for instance, um, a rectangular pile of field stones uh, in the middle of a forest that had sat there for two hundred years uh, as a possible springboard for allowing a rebuild under these terms of this bylaw.
Which was my fundamental, one of my questions. Let me ask you, what is your, and this is just, I understand your opinion, uh, on the term abandoned? Cause that's what I, I, I'm, I'm being very clear, that's what I'm, I am stuck, so I.
That's a very good.
Attorney DeLeese has made a very interesting argument, right? I understand, and I understand your, your think, thought process and your position. But to your, to that last point, when does something become abandoned, the four year provision is clear, right? We've extended the timeout where people sort of as of, almost as of right, as of right, right? Can go in and say, I need to rebuild. We have some ability to extend that time period based on circumstances that are undefined.
Mm-hmm.
That's okay, gives us some way to do that. Um, to your point, lots of places, lots of things that could benefit from, from the, uh, indication of this. But at some point, and again, that is my assumption, please tell me if I'm wrong, uh, there was an intent that things that are old that have been otherwise quote unquote abandoned, whatever that might be, are just that, right? We can't do the same thing that was there if you are no longer doing it. So, I mean, what's, what's your take on abandonment?
I think Attorney DeLeese is very, very interesting point and a very cogent point, that the lot continues to be assessed at the value of a building lot. And that I presume taxes have been paid based on that assessment up to this day.
Otherwise, we don't apply.
So we can't, which would be, we wouldn't be here for our case. Um, so yeah, I think that's a very strong argument for not having abandoned the lot.
So, so just, just to jump, if I might?
Well, I was gonna turn over the board because I, I've been not blessed in the conversation, we turned to Bob. Let me, and, and I will absolutely give you an opportunity. Board, you've heard us vote in the back for this. Some interesting arguments. Thoughts? Cause if you have some, you have some, perhaps Attorney DeLeese can. But there's some.
I ju, I, I just had a clear, short answer to the question that.
Okay.
Case law equates abandonment to intention. So, uh, uh, that, that's why there's the word abandon.
Sure.
Which has to be, you need to intend to abandon, and then there's the phrase for non-use for a period of time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so the word abandon, and it, it's, it's very clear in case law, means intention. So if, if you're going down that road, I would ask the board to think about it from the standpoint of what was the intention?
Oh, and, and again, that's the question, you don't have any kind of first hand testimony as to what you, you know, you represent it to us, that you think, and then fair, absolutely fair, that you think there were certain things going on, right? To my question of why has nothing been done, is we rebuilding until this point, which is, you know, we're, we're, we're a decade later.
Yep.
So, so I think a good point of. Board, anybody here, thoughts?
I'm gonna give you a glance. Was that what you were gonna chat in with earlier, or was it definition of abandonment?
Yeah, I was just gonna mention that.
Yep.
I had some other thoughts, but I, I wanted, I wanted to, I wanted to answer it clearly, just that one thing that had an answer. Um.
I think people are thinking hard.
Trying to think how to word it.
Now, it's your position that the effective date of the bylaw, you're taking that to mean the entire situ, zoning bylaw?
Yeah, so, um, the short answer is yes, and, um, the, uh, I, I also don't think it necessarily matters for purposes of this discussion because I believe that we cannot lose, once we've established that we have a conforming use on this property, and we've used it that way for three quarters of a century, I don't see how we lose it unless it's non-conforming. And I, I don't think it's non-conforming because the bylaw says it's conforming. So I, I, and, and if we're rebuilding a structure that is not gonna be non-conforming, then we're rebuilding conforming structures. I don't even think that that even applies. Um, but if it did apply, I don't think that it is limited to twenty twenty two, and I understand that Bob may have intended that to be the case, but it's the town meeting that votes. It's the town meeting that makes the judgment of what this language is to mean in their minds. And if the language is not, we, we can only go by the language, and if I pick up the zoning bylaw and, and, and I talk about, like, the very first page of zoning bylaw is the purpose of the bylaw, and it says this bylaw was adopted for certain purposes. Well, you don't lose the purpose of the bylaw if you read this section because this section only applies to the year twenty twenty two and beyond. You still have to give life to the entire bylaw. This section, unless by its terms it's limited, has to be read in the context of the whole bylaw. That's what you do. That's all you do. So the answer is that while Bob may have intended that, town meeting may not have intended it, and they're the ones who voted, and you have to read it the way the language appears.
I think it's a wild stretch that you're, you're interpreting or assuming that town meeting, that's something different than what we're up to.
Well, how could you assume that it meant anything?
Wild.
Bob, did you?
It specifically says, right, modifications, destructions, uses, land structure, likely existing as of the effective date of this law, April eleven, twenty twenty two. Did this exist in, in whole or in part? No, it did not. All of that, I have pictures back to twenty fifteen, shows an empty lot with what remains of a patio.
Yep.
There's no hole, there's no substantial structure, there's no piece of a foundation, it's a patio, that's not a foundation, that's a pile of bricks. I see the shag in the back.
If there was an intention to abandon the use, you, you, they would have filled the hole.
Again, there's no hole.
If there was a hole up until six months ago, how can you see the depth of that? Ryan, are you here right now? Did you have the hole filled six months ago?
Yes, and, and we had an issue with insurance because of the hole on the property.
So it is there.
So deep, so deep.
Don't think we can have people talk about.
Not there with my clients, I'm sorry. I just wanted to, to tell you that the fact is that it was seven feet deep, it was so deep, it had to be filled.
Yeah, I. See, we're, we're, again, so I'm just one person. Right, where I'm coming out on this is, I can, I can see what your argument is coming from. Uh, that second paragraph, which sets forth the April eleven, twenty twenty two, um, date, right? Talks about the following subsections, right, alterations in non-conforming structures, right? A, B, and C, right? We don't have non-conforming structure, we have no structure. Right, so I, I think we're all stuck in different parts of this, anyway, and, and that's, that's part of it. I, I, I'm stuck on the abandoned.
Well, it's not abandoned. It's abandoned or not used.
Oh, I know.
Abandoned or not used.
I understand.
Not used.
Right, uh. So, uh, and, and the, the question is abandoned for what purpose?
But.
Right? Attorney DeLeese is gonna argue that it was used because the accessory structure was there.
And, and the taxes.
And, well, and the taxes is, is interesting, yeah.
The, the, the taxes are part of the use, I mean, if you, your, 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 your assessment is tied into your use of the property, if they didn't want to pay the tax, it's a large tax bill.
Sure.
Every, every quarter they're getting it, right? And she's, I don't wanna pay this, I, I can't, this is, I don't have an intention to use it that way, let me call them seeking abatement, not done. Why? Because there's an intention for it to be a single family dwelling.
Pay taxes on buildable lot, or, or on an empty lot, not property, not a house, not, just an empty lot.
The value of the assessment was valued as a single family dwelling lot.
As a lot.
The land, the land.
Right, unbuildable land, right, just for everybody, just for everybody else, right, that's. Which, you know, again, is somewhat, um, you know, is irrelevant, at least, I would say.
And, and these can be distinguishing factors than in other circumstances that you might come across. Right? Other circumstances might not have a lot where you can build a fully conforming house, eliminate the non-conforming. Other circumstances might not have a tax assessment for a taxable lot uh, for a single family dwelling house lot. And they might not have the accessory building, so there's, there's a lot of different factors, and that's why every matter is, is to be evaluated on a case by case basis.
This, this lot is somewhat unique too, in that it's one of the few areas of Humrock where it's entirely upland and entirely out of the, the flood plain.
Right.
And the lot itself is similar in size to the joint house.
Wait, so I'm, I'm gonna see.
You're, you're many things, I don't think that's one of them, but, okay, what's, what's the question?
So the, so the question here is whether they've forfeited their right to build on the lot because they haven't used it for the last ten years, that?
I think, I, I think that's where, yeah, I mean, I think the fundamental question, right, is because we're outside of certain timeframes, um, whether that prevents fundamentally, whether that prevents them under our zoning bylaws from building, to their point, a otherwise conforming structure on a non-conforming lot, right?
In which, in which there was.
Previously at one point in time.
A long since established to be protected and build a lot.
That's right.
Yes.
That's the question, that's the question.
Whether they lost that, right, because there's been a duration of time that's happened between the time in which the lot was an active residential use and. Yeah, but he, the, the thing is that you can, the, the, the language regarding the abandonment or non-use only applies to circumstances of non-conforming situations. It doesn't apply to conforming situations.
Conforming the building or the conformity of the law?
Well, you have, you have a building setback, you have a lot size, you have a use provision in your bylaw. The property was established as a single family dwelling lot, and therefore continued as a single family dwelling lot for some period of time. And it, this structure was not conforming, so we, we have, we have a situation where you have a conforming use because it was there and was allowed to be there with a non, with a structure that was non-conforming to set back in the old days, right? So if you're looking at what would you do, like, what does the provision apply to? It applies to the non-conforming structure, and we're not even proposing to rebuild it in a non-conforming manner. So that's, that's where, where I think that there's an argument that might be a little different than.
Aesthetically, it's been maintained as well, so I don't know, to further emphasize the lack of abandonment. You drive by, it's not overgrown, I think plantings have even since been insult, you know, to the neighbors, so I would say, wherever that's where, it hasn't been a fix, again, it's not.
Well, again, a vendor, not, again, to, to Attorney DeLeese's point, right, we have some ability buying into his argument, let's say, right, that we have some ability, some power to, um, waive that, let's say, four year time, time period, we believe four year time period applies if the property was abandoned or got used for a period of four years or more, right, so. I, I, I think.
Or you don't even have to go through the analysis, um, in interest of equity and say we don't need to because you can do this for the reasons DeLeese said.
Yeah. We could do that. I, I don't, I don't know if we're all, if we're all willing to do that, um, here's.
What's the real risk associated with it? Other than.
That we go back, that we, that anybody that at any time had a non-conforming lot and a building on it, for whatever reason, um, and that building has been otherwise abandoned, demolished, to Bob's point, there's, there's a two hundred year old foundation on it, it can now.
But, but, but.
Assuming.
It's not, it's not even that, it's the empty lot. This is trying to make an argument that we'll want to take an empty lot for the house.
Well, maybe.
Use that house, right, and then we.
Right.
Do we feel as a board that that is a better situation than a house on a lot?
Absolutely.
For what reason?
Cause these are undersized lots. Because these are undersized lots, and just in this case, it's an undersized lot, yes, the building would be otherwise conforming as setbacks. But it's an undersized lot, it's a lot that otherwise, as of today, if it did previously exist, we could not create it. Because it does not meet our, meet our zoning requirement.
The lot's there.
That's right. Now, I'm just, this is not. You know, and and that's kind of why, why we exist, um. So, so that's, that's the. Policy.
I had, I have another point that I didn't make, it might, might be able to help if it's okay, George?
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're just trying to get somewhere.
No, I get it, I get it.
We're not, we're not trying to be.
Look at it. Yeah, look at it differently, alright, let's say the fire happens today, tonight, okay? And somebody does not apply for building permit in four years, foundations removed. Nothing exists on the lot except land. Twenty years later. In the year, what would that be, twenty forty-three?
Yeah.
Somebody comes forward and says, I want to put a house on this lot.
Right.
I'm going to apply to the ZBA to waive that provision.
Right.
Well, they would be able to demonstrate that a house existed on the lot after twenty twenty-two. Or at the time of the zoning change.
Yeah.
In twenty twenty-two. And you would have the authority or your, or your successors to be able to say, we think it's appropriate in the circumstance to waive that. So forty years later, somebody can come forward. Simply because the fire happened tonight. But because the fire happened in twenty twelve, they can. Now, is that fair?
I, uh, well, I'm not reading it the same, same way, I I I I think that they can, they can apply, and I think the question then becomes. Whether we would grant the extension. Of that four-year period, right? And whether. Right, so there's two criteria, there's one, is it not used, abandoned or otherwise not used for a period of four or more years, okay? And then we can waive that time limit, right, but we need a reason to waive that time limit. And I think. Where, where, we're thinking about it, right, and in a situation, let's say, a hundred years later, when somebody came to us, right, there was no good reason to. Arguably, no good reason for it to finally, where somebody comes to us five years down and says, there were exigent circumstances and I couldn't get to, you know, they were filing, the insurance company, four years, right? We don't have the money, we'd, we'd like a waiver of the four-year period, we'd like to rebuild the non-conforming, arguably, the non-conforming house on the non-conforming lot, right? Just as it was. Right, but it's outside of the four-year window. I think, right, that's a compelling reason, I'm not going to say we vote one way or the other, but that's, I think, something that we take very seriously. This might, well, am I saying things? Out of school, I mean, this sounds like what you were saying about the intent of the underlying modification. So I think. And again, I am not, this, this is a board, we vote, we vote on these things. Where I am stuck on it and I am, is a, a, a specific. I think. I I think I find, right, I would, I would otherwise think about this as a property that has not been used or otherwise has been abandoned for a period of four years or more, right? Can we grant an extension of that time period? Sure. In my mind, right, that's the way I read it, the question is. Why in this case, right? And having a sort of a, a real, you know, what was going on, why, why is it a decade later, right? Why are people coming now as opposed to five years ago or seven years ago or three years ago? Or, you know, twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two, or prior to filling in the hole. Or even prior to filling, I'm, you know, and again, prior to filling in the hole, I understand it, you know, why now fill, yeah, now you fill in the hole where the insurance company is an insurer.
We also have COVID.
I get it, I get it. Yeah. Okay.
Which, by the way, would have extended timeframes, right?
Yeah, I mean, that would have been, so had, had this happened. Twenty twenty eighteen, had this burnt down in twenty eighteen, right, twenty nineteen? Right? Sure, right, that's an argument. It's, it's a decade, so.
Let me ask you another question. So, um.
You know, where do we stop?
Well, uh, we. Um.
And I know your answer is not here, here before.
I think we stopped in your vote, but the, the important question is, i- i- that I need to understand are. Uh because this is a three-member board.
Yeah.
In a, in a finding scenario.
Yeah.
A majority of three members. Takes the cake, in a special permit scenario, a unanimous three members. Takes the cake.
Right.
So you tell me, we're, we're requesting to rebuild. A house. Which would, if this house existed, it would be a finding under section eight twenty, right, or eight ten point two B or whatever it is?
Yeah. Could, could the setups, things go.
The language, your bylaw, the language, your bylaw now says, especially, you can waive it by special permit slash finding. So tell me. Is it a special permit or is it finding, because I need to know that when you guys are about to vote. Because that's going to tell me whether I'm going to request a continuance, whether I'm going to request a withdraw. Or whether I'm going to allow the vote to go if I think maybe you were Justin's yes and Chris is a no. So I, I need to, I need to know that.
You're ma- you're making, you're making an assumption.
I am, I, I could be.
Yeah, and I believe that's the right assumption.
Okay, so that's fine.
But, but I, I think where. I think where, and I'll tell you right now, I'm going to be very transparent, where I'm stuck on is, um, really making. The compelling reason that would differentiate this case from other cases that will come before this board requesting similar relief. In quote-unquote, similar situations, right? Uh distinguishing this, um, uh because I, where, where I'm coming out on this is. We would have to grant you. Additional time, greater than the four years. I think I can get to. You know, it, it's fine that it happened prior to twenty twenty-two, right, because if it happened in twenty twenty-one. Right, what's that the difference in after twenty twenty-two, right? Um. But I need, I need, I think, a set of compelling reasons. Why in this situation you get more than four years. And or in this case, why you get it that day.
In this case, the intent was not to abandon the property, just still paying the taxes of the builtable lot year to year. Keeping the foundation wall there.
But, but look, whatever happened to the house, right, happened to the house, right, I don't, you were burnt down, I, burnt down, right, okay. Burnt down, if it was insured, there was insurance money, why didn't that roll into rebuilding the house? So there's no insurance money, right? Okay, then why wasn't the property sold, right, to someone that could do something with it? I mean, there's, there's a whole series of, I think, events that would be compelling to some of us. Right, as to what's going on here, right? The, the argument that there was a foundation and all that, I think, it's. Right, right, there's no, as far as I'm concerned, there's no home on, on, on the property. The, um, accessory building use. Doesn't really move the needle for me very much.
Could we put a ba- could you put a bathroom and a kitchen in that and put an addition on it, do you think? What do you think about that? I don't think.
He already said. Attached to another property, and they own the, the abutting property, so the use of that shed is kind of mediated by the fact that they can just walk around their other shed or this shed. But. As a residential use, an accessory dwelling to that property could probably, you know, get those two properties worked in it.
Well, I, I know that, but the, the, uh, what if we don't want an accessory dwelling? Why if we want to continue with single-family dwelling use and we have a building that's there that's non-conforming? And we want to make it larger and put a kitchen and a, a bedroom in there.
Well, he'd be probably using that. Alright, so, so that, that comes, that, that becomes probably.
Previously, engineering wise.
Have, I'm going to lean on the attorneys on the board, wasn't there discussions that precedents can't be set? So if there's a concern about setting a precedent, which I think you've alluded.
Yes, but again, we, we try to keep. Decision-making on the board, it shouldn't be random. Right, um, it should be consistent and it should, it, it should, we should be looking at the same criteria, right? So, so, yeah, so.
Everyone's a pile of rocks, that's a pile of rocks versus an act of God or an adverse situation being applied, or I would look at that differently. Presented, so that's. So.
I, that's where I'm, that's where I'm, that's where I'm, I think, from my standpoint, I don't know what we're convinced, so he, right? No, no, I'm, I'm not saying anyway, right, is there, are there things that applicants could say to you? That would move the needle, right, I'm telling them, I, I think, making a compelling case as to why we should waive the time limit. Right, because I, I read this as we have the ability to waive a time.
In the, in the discussion in, uh, when this was presented to the, for this, for this bylaw.
Yeah.
Presented by the board, the discussion, uh. Was along the lines of extending the time period due to procedural. Uh issues that made the procedure go beyond that four years probing, uh, you know, things like that.
Sure.
Not that, you, you, you know, insurance settlement.
Right.
Things in the procedure that extended that four-year time. That's how, you know, a lot of that, uh, discussion. Uh. Played out. Uh, so if, you know, if I heard something that, you know, yeah, took us six years of probing, you know, the X, Y, and blah blah and whatever. Or, you know.
Or maybe, maybe the person that owned the property wasn't competent. I mean, you know, to transact on the property, I'm just saying, I, I don't know, I mean, there, you know, probing.
But extenuating circumstances that took more than four years, so that would be. You know, something that I could hear that, you know, oh, you know, probate report, you know? Not, I didn't feel like it'd be willing, like.
Yeah, I understood, uh, I think you and I are very much on the similar on that, right, we'd like to hear some more about this.
I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the wording of the, of the bylaw. And it says exactly why you can't do this.
If Mr. Drawer, Drury, the previous gentleman chose not to build and left those structures as they lie, goes by for six years, hypothetically speaking.
We would. We are. Be having a, a very similar conversation, I think, right?
And I can't imagine we would agree that leaving them as they were were the best scenario for the community.
But there would have been structure on the property, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Little, the hole was left, correct?
In, in, in that situation, they cleared the lots almost instead.
They kind of have.
Because they had.
Right. Fire situation. So again, I, I really underappall, there's a reason this was extended, there's a, it's more than the original two years, there's a reason, there's some variability there, right? There's a policy reason to take situations where buildings have been otherwise ruined. Right, are not habitable and are, are a danger to the community and allow people to rebuild. I, I, I agree with you, that's true, I also, I am reaffirmed that this is not something that can go into perpetuity. Right, so there has to be, so on this, I, I agree with you, I also agree with you. Um. Sheriff, do you, I'm sorry.
I don't know, you, we, we can clarify a few of those things, you want?
Sure. If you, if you would like, please come up, name.
Uh.
Okay. Name and address, we're up, yeah, yeah, miss.
My name is Brian Spalade and I'm from, uh, twenty-five foot road south.
I'm just feeling pleased you didn't.
Be a funding property, actually. And, um. So gentleman that, uh, owned this house, uh, on the lot. When it burnt down, he had a nervous breakdown. And he has been in care ever since. And I knew him, I knew his brother, I knew his sister, and, um, there was nothing going on with the lot for a period of time. And, um, they did. Um, originally, I, I want to say that they were contemplating building something there, and then, um. All the money from the insurance had to go to his healthcare, the pain care. And, um, you know, I'm not privy to the exact dollar amount or how long. But what happened is it just kept dragging on and on and on and on. So one day I reached out to, uh, his sister Beverly, who I knew was taking care of hi- his affairs.
Yeah.
And I said to her, um, listen, I, I, I noticed you haven't done anything with that lot. Are you interested in selling it? And she said, well, you know, it's funny you say that, because we, uh, we're kind of running up against, um, him running out of money. And we need some additional money to kind of take care of him. And I said, um, well, I'd be willing to buy it, right, and at the time, I think the lot was assessed. At three hundred and twenty-five thousand, and they always paid the taxes on it or as they could rebuild on, but that. You know, they were thinking maybe someday something like that would happen. But, I, I said to her, look, I, um, I was, so I, I think I paid two seventy-five, two eighty for the lot. And, um, I said to her, at that time, there was a big concave that almost looked like a fallen one off in the middle of the structure. I mean, in the middle of the lot. And you can't really see it in the pictures because it doesn't do justice, because it was grown up. So the weeds that were down grew up, and that was just left like that. So it, it looked like it was flat, but it wasn't flat. We have a picture here, um. Of. You know, as, as. Jeff was saying, well, just pass this through. Um, that is the, the area that was filled in, uh, backfilled in from the Vogel's house across the street that, um. Jay Ellis was building, they, when they excavated there, I happened to see him that day, and I gotten friendly with him because he built a house next door to me too. And I said, hey, Jay, uh, if you're not, if you're just going to take that someplace, you can fill in my hole in my lot with it. And he said, sure, I'll do that for you, Brian, so, I mean, that's how that happened, it was just, um.
So, so here, so here we have circumstances where somebody was. In an institution from the fire, still to this day.
To this day, yeah.
Yeah, and so.
And tax money and insurance money used to pay for healthcare.
Twenty fourteen. Twenty fourteen? You, so you guys took title.
No, we took.
Twenty, twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
Yeah, I'm missing.
Our, our. Over twenty twenty.
Right, but I don't have the transfer, the deed or transfer.
But it's like, it's a registered.
Registered, I know, that's.
Is it crazy to think too, you know, say there's twenty of these lots in town, people are all on here watching, we. Give an answer that's unfavorable and everybody files an abatement tomorrow for town taxes, and they're going to say, oh, this is an unbuildable lot. Based upon this scenario, and all of a sudden. You know, there's fifteen people at the door tomorrow filing an abatement, and, you know, it's tax money law as well, right, we'd have a risk of that.
It, but that lots ultimately measures account services. Right, and it would never use account services because it's not a buildable lot.
Um, but, excuse me, it's funny because I, I, I went through the tax records, just, uh, to your point, Mr. Marks. I went through the tax records of, you know, situant, I just started looking at all the, the lots. And probably ninety percent of them that are, um, that are vacant lots. Are taxed as unbuildable, and it says right on, unbuildable, and the tax rate is, I, I mean, they're all, you know, valued at like seventeen thousand dollars, fifteen thousand dollars, nineteen thousand. And they've always taxed me at the full amount, and I've always paid the tax. And the previous owner always paid the full amount tax bill, thinking they, they would be able to rebuild it, even given the circumstances.
If we rule on this. Against it. And I don't know, pardon my ignorance. Is there an opportunity for you to get however many years taxes you pay?
You can only get an abatement for the new, they're coming up.
Yeah.
To going forward.
So, so you guys took title in twenty twenty?
Correct.
Oh, there we go, that's right.
He's old school.
He's old school.
Um, alright, so. Right, it's twenty twenty, took title in twenty twenty. And twenty twenty-three. Right, it's twenty twenty, took title in twenty twenty, and twenty twenty-three.
That's it. I think that's all we got for you.
That's what you have.
Where else are you gonna find a similar circumstance where somebody was institutionalized? And the insurance money used to pay for healthcare and.
So.
Yeah.
To the applicants, it's almost three years later. Half, three years later. Why, what's gonna happen, three years?
To be perfect, to be perfectly honest with it, I just retired and, um.
Now you have the opportunity to.
Now, I guess, got me thinking of different thing, and that's, that's what really spurred it on.
Is the intent for you to occupy?
Yes. My intent long term is me to occupy that and my children that have the big, the big house.
Exactly.
And so the only difference with accessory dwelling in your bylaw, the whole bylaw, not just the accessory dwelling section. Is the, um. Is the fact that in accessory dwelling, it's limited to. The lesser, I think it's the lesser node or the grip. It's limited to like.
Seven hundred.
Seven hundred square feet or thirty or forty percent. So the size of any accessory dwelling unit would be much smaller than. If this first single family plot.
Right. Right.
Which plays out both for town. We don't have giant houses, they're even small.
What's wrong with giant houses? Town gets more money from them. Um.
A lot of things, right?
So. Rob. No, I'm not putting it in the spot. I mean, you've heard some, you've heard some discussion here. And you're the, you're sort of the prime, prime author of this. Well, and I, and I've heard from my colleague here, uh, again, it's not my concern, like, the three of us have to vote. The whole board's in the vote, but the three of us want to vote. Maybe, uh. I think we're, we're both, there's a couple of us that are, a couple on the fence. Um, on, stuck on the reason, the extension of this, right? We, I think we both agree through our discussions here, uh, that this is sort of past the four years. We are willing to envision a scenario where we would be able to grant an extension of that four-year period. Right? Does this situation. Fit into. Things that were contemplated at the time for an extension of that four-year period? Or is it?
Well.
And, and.
I, I, you know.
And you don't have to answer directly, right? And I'd have you for color commentary, right? You know, this is the kind of thing we're talking about.
Editorial.
Yeah.
Footnotes.
Footnotes.
Um, so, so first. Attorney Dean, you can correct me on this, but I believe the state statute that is like this one talks about a two-year period.
Right.
Um, and that's what Citrus original, uh, was two years. And the reason for that, pretty obvious to me, was that you wanted to avoid the situation where somebody had a wrecked house and walked away from it. Uh, and it became light and a neighborhood danger, uh, zone. Uh, so the incentive or the reason that this bylaw was originally written was to incentivize people to rebuild. It rapped it, rapped it, I said. Um, when we thought about extending that two-year time period to four years. The argument was, and Chris has talked about it, uh, probate. Was resolution of a divorce proceeding, illness, those sorts of things. So that's why the two years was extended to four years.
And why was the, why was the exception, uh, that would allow the four years to be waived?
Well, I think, I think we're, I think we're here tonight to talk about that. And I, you know, and I'm perfectly willing to go down the route that the same thinking that extended the two years to four years. And the same circumstances that extension was trying to deal with. Seeing to the evidence here. Only it hasn't been four years, it's been whatever, ten years.
Right.
The original owner's still in care. You know, so. What I've heard as the circumstances here are, are very similar and resonate with the circumstances that were contemplated. When we were trying to craft this new, this new language. So we, as far as, as far as that goes, I'm, I'm certainly in sympathy with. What the applicant is, uh, is attempting to do here.
So I have a question, this is for everybody, more. Do we, and this is, this is a real question, do we agree that we have. In, there are situations where we could take something that is, uh, give approval to a project, let's say. That is past the four-year time. Under the way eight, ten, point one. Is written.
Eight, ten, point one is written, so yes, we could, under certain circumstances.
Yeah, 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 no, I'm not, I, I just wanna make sure that we're on the same page, right? That we, we agree that there are cer, there are circumstances, whether this is one or not, right, I'm trying to deconstruct this. That we could do that, right? I think everybody agrees that there may be a circumstance. Um, and that. We would have to do that in this case. Right, not, not, um, let me rephrase that. Well, I'm not saying that we do do that in this case, but in order for us to give them. The opportunity to build, we'd have to look at this and say, this is past the four-year period, but. For whatever reason we say, it's okay, right? There's no other provision, nobody reads this in any other way that says this provision allows them. To get out from the exception where we have to find past the four-year period. I, I don't know if I'm explaining that correctly, alright? Um. Let me rephrase that. For us to grant them their request to build the proposed structure, we would have to do so. Under the provision that says this, this was not used for a period of four years or more, except this time limit maybe with. Right, that's what I'm trying to get at, right? There's no other argument that, that this, our granting of. This finding allowing us to get built falls under it, right? Because we've heard a lot of arguments here, right? I'm trying to, I'm trying to crystallize the issue.
Those would be the reasons.
That would be the rea, we, we would have.
A lot of two or three of our arguments.
There's no other.
You're asking, why would we issue a special permit for this one and not, and not somebody else?
No, 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 why? Yeah, I, I mean, I, I'm saying, there is no other argument, right? They, they, they can't do this as a right. This is past the four-year period. We have to give them an extension. We agree that that's, i- if we were to grant this, it would be under the provision that allows us, that allows us to grant the extension.
Under the provision of the. This would be, this would be the.
Correct. That's, we all agree that that would be the, that's the only basis right now as we read this as a group.
This, this burned down last year. And they came to us and said, we're gonna rebuild.
Yeah, no problem.
Yes, Mr. Dror, you can do it, uh, or.
Right.
Yeah. But, yes, in that, in that situation.
Well, because as I said, we've heard a lot of arguments. I'm trying to get down to the core argument here that we would have to write. So if we're, we're making a finding, right, if we're voting on a finding, I want, we should, or a special permit and be, be, be a special person.
I think we are, you're making an exception, you know, to a hard rule. I think it's more than just a finding. I think this is to be. A special permit. We're making an exception for a very specific reason or very, you know.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't think that this is a finding, uh, finding fact. It's, it, I really, it's, it's a special, real finding fact. It's a, I think it's a, I agree with you, I think it's a special permit.
Well, arguably, that's gonna make the decision easier because it would give us the opportunity to have conditions and.
Well, it has to be unanimous on the three member board.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think the. If I were to rewrite this article, it would contain language that said, original owner, time period.
There'd be real conditions for the, for the more than four years.
I think this property was sold eight, eight years after the fire. They purchased an empty lot. Well, twenty twenty, three years ago, the language in the bylaws that you have two years. You know. Not four, two years. Three years ago is what it said. So they bought an empty lot thinking they could rebuild. It's already been not built on for eight years at that moment. So I think it was a gamble to buy an empty lot thinking you're gonna rebuild, you know, when we have. You know, wording in our bylaws.
So to your point, then purchasing in twenty twenty, they would have had to build on it by twenty twenty-two. Uh, I think they would have. Missed before.
Missed before, right.
At, at the best.
Yeah.
Right? And they were arguing.
The extensions, the extension would have gone to the original owner, had he had intent for, because he was, you know, a hospital, whatnot. Needed an extension. But for somebody else to buy, then purchase that empty lot, thinking that now I can take his extension or whatnot. I think now we're losing pressure.
Right, and then, and again, best case scenario, they would have had to have.
Right.
Theoretically, right, that's.
But that's, he could have purchased the lot with the hopes that no one was gonna build and do what he's trying to do. And go off and block with the view or so.
I think this is important, accessory dwelling, you know, if he's got a film on, put an accessory dwelling on it, you know, have a nice little house and heavy kids would be behind her and. You know, it sounds like a steep deal to me.
So ju- just to your point, because you did buy in twenty twenty. There was, there was the legal tolling Extension Act or whatever during the period of the, of the. Number of days of the, uh. Emer, there's the COVID emergency. So COVID being another reason why somebody might not wanna build, um, and then you have. You have an extension. Uh, under, under law. Regarding matters like this for a period of time, that's a duration of the, uh, uh. Emergency declaration. So, um, that, an argument could be made there during that timeframe.
The buyer happened in twenty.
No, no, but we're talking about when you just made the point, when he purchased the property in twenty twenty.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, his point is that that's a gamble. Yeah.
Eight years he gambled at that point whether he could rebuild or not.
Well, I mean, just look at the tax records from the town.
Two years it already expired. Four years, you know, you go to the new language, had already expired. And now he's out at, at, in twenty twenty, he was eight years. You know, you know, we would have had to look at this and said, you know, even we can't expect eight years. It's now been eleven years.
And we've explained reasons why.
No, I, we have to get a time.
And now with a new owner, it's been eleven years since a previous owner lost their house.
During the pandemic that extends the timeframe.
So, I, I mean.
Might be in the four-year period. Uh, anyway, with, with buying a property at two hundred and something thousand dollars. Which the town says is a buildable lot. Town record. Gee, I wonder why he didn't try to come in? Maybe because the town is telling him, you got yourself a buildable lot? Wow, this is a harsh, harsh, you guys have discretion.
I, I don't know that that's a signing fact.
No, I think that's an argument to take up with town. You know, how, how the town.
Should this talk to that? So, I mean, it sounds like there's a contradiction there where.
Does this on the bylaw talk to taxes?
No, it's not, I mean, no.
It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't give you any standards.
No, no, we, we're agree with you. It doesn't give you any standards, right? Um, but, I, I mean, there is no.
Year five, because of the way that's written, should the town take into consideration?
Well, actually, it does give standards because if we're looking at this as a special permit, you then have to, you then have to go to the special permit standards. Which are in section, what, nine hundred and something? And those standards are that granting any special permit, the Board of Appeals shall assure. In addition to any specific requirements elsewhere in the bylaw. That it's an appropriate location, that it's developed, that it will not adversely affect the neighborhood. That it, it, it will not be an undue nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. That you would have appropriate facilities provided to assure operation. That there would not be any significant impact on public or private water supply. And then the other condition doesn't apply here because we're not in the Water and Resource Protection District, but. An argument we made that we meet all that. I mean, we've had a, a dwelling on here for three quarters of a century, so.
But that's, yeah, but that's also an addition to any specific requirements elsewhere.
Yeah, and there are no specific requirements elsewhere in the bylaw. So this would be the all-in-one. So in denying the special permit, you have to feel like you're not assured of A through E.
I remember that they had a bottom eight, ten clause.
Yes.
But eight, ten gives you discretion. You choose a special permit to waive the timeframe without any standards.
Gives us a discretion not to.
Yes, without any standards. We're just talking about standards. What would your standards be?
Yeah, so I think we're in agreement that this, this is a request, has to be a request by the board. I think that's what it falls under, I think, at this point, um. I'm on the fence. It appears that you, you would have, if you meant to vote a no. And a yes, and probably a no for me. I'm. Uh, because what I, from my standpoint, what I, what I had heard. And the timing involved is although horrible, terrible situation. Um, I can, I can overcome the conclusion that the prior owners. Right, were not willing to rebuild the property, unable to rebuild on the property. Um, and that the current owners wish to do so, but. Again, without a timeframe, this, the SOB is a slippery slope and. I, I don't know that going out eight or twelve, ten and eleven years, house was a property burnt down. Um, was within the original spirit, um, of law, of the bylaw. Uh, although the reasons behind it's stated. This is me, I don't think we can, we've heard from other people on the board, um.
What do you want? Are you ready to make a motion or are you?
No, I'm, I'm waiting. They're, they're discussing, so I'm gonna give them the opportunity to discuss.
Is there feedbacks on this?
I think there is. Yeah, so I, I, I will, uh, I, I, I want them, I, I, I want them to, so let me turn it over before you guys. Anything, uh, we've heard, anybody else in the room, right, you had some comment, yes, man, please.
Um, I'm Vicki Spalain, twenty five, so, uh, just to kind of give you a little more background on the community center. Um, his sister Beverly came to our house while we were in the process of buying it, um. Her brother, who owned the house, uh, is in a nursing home, um. Very, I, I think it was more of a sentimental torn, she hoped that he would be able to rebuild. She came upstairs, took a picture of the lot to show him, this is, wish has always been to rebuild, he loved how Barack's brother lived across the street from us. Um, I think she just couldn't bring herself to decide one whether, if he's gonna get out, if he's finally gonna get out, get him, you know, get him back in tomorrow. Um, it was more of, you know, a sister, brother type of, so. Um, I think she had hoped that he would finally one day rebuild, would he move back to tomorrow? Finally, finally, when we approached her, I think that's when she made her decision, so.
Is everybody online that's looking to comment on this?
No.
Well, um, yes, sir.
Uh, my name is Jesse Gustafson, I live one of the flooding lots, uh, three twenty, Central Ave, we have a quick statement. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening, I'm the owner of the property directly at Budiman three twenty-six Central Ave. When we purchased our home about five years ago, we were told that the piece of land next door wasn't unbuiltable. I did see investigating in my due diligence period with the building department at Town Hall to make sure this wasn't true. I found out that there was some sort of a running clock, which began approximately two years earlier upon some sort of demolition of the original property, which burned down. It was my understanding that the original owner had some finite period of, I believe, four years from the time the building was demolished, beginning the process to rebuild. Within months of us purchasing our home in the beginning of twenty nineteen, I know that that window had closed. Uh, it was brought to my attention that the status of the land would become unbuiltable if the property conveys to a new owner. I know this was something prior, uh, and that the new owner had no recourse to return its status to become a buildable lot again in the future. Uh, the only person who could have made that happen would have been the original owner, and they would have needed to file a lawsuit with the town and unfortunately sue the town using an instrument, uh, for using an instrument taken against them. Once that land changed hands, the case should have been closed for three twenty-six add, uh, and could have, and should have remained as an unbuiltable lot. Uh, the view from my home is, and this is where my issue really comes up, the view from my home, the views from my home would be impacted if this project were allowed to move forward. I would not have purchased this home with this lot, uh, I had found to have been deemed buildable. I purchased this home with the views in my living room. I'm actually sitting in the living room right now as I'm gathering my thoughts and preparing for the statement. Uh, thank you for listening to my conference regarding this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um.
Well, um, what is the, um, I'm just wondering, did we ask if anybody online?
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
Okay, yeah.
So we, we've gone sort of around internally and went offline.
And, and the name of the gentleman you just spoke?
Jesse Gustafson.
Three twenty, thank you. Yeah. Would you like to make questions, anyone's negative reassess? If that's something
Yeah, that's, it, it's perfectly, uh, 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 we left this for last because we knew there would be right, and you raised, sorry, I just wanna put on record, you raised some both important and I think relevant issues and questions we've heard from the author of, uh, this driven, uh, and, and building department, I heard sort of our thinking on this as well. You know, and how we, we as individuals view it. Um, so I thought, I think that's, that was important. Uh, but yes, we're, we're request for so, I, I, I'm sorry, we should vote on it. I think.
Motion.
Motion for, continue one second. All in favor?
One, you want, you guys still, they're, they're saying twenty, twenty-four?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Elizabeth, no.
Next one.
January is closed, but, you know.
Okay.
February.
February it is?
Thanks.
Love it.
Uh, move.
Any, uh Any other business? Do you have any?
Do you have a minute?
I don't see you have minutes.
Oh, we're eating on a head throw.
Any approval of any, any decisions?
I think we got all of that taken care of online, thank you, gentlemen, they bothered.
Thank you. Thank you, all, thanks.
Thank you, good, thank you. Then in that case, I will move to adjourn and wish everybody a happy holidays.
Second.
In favor?
Bye.
Absolutely.
Who are you sending to stick to?
I, I see you wear the same sneaks.
What else?
How are you, Mr. Jones, nice to see you. Yeah, 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 with my new cap and that's extremely, I feel hot.
Excellent.
So we have
I got this.
Thank you.